Are we live or no?
We're live, but what about you? So it is April 22nd. Good evening. Oh, Joey, welcome. I'm going to open up the Hastings and Hudson Board of Education meeting for April 22nd. Dr. McCursie has a family function. He's going to be here shortly. Dr. Zsamanski is taking over for him at the moment. We're going to open this evening with, I can't believe it's been a year and a half actually, but the members of the Clark Committee here in Hastings are going to present what was Phase Two. Some of you on the board might remember Phase One, which again was, I think, October 23, where we renamed Mount Hope Boulevard as Doctors Mamie and Kenneth Clark Way. And second phase of the project, which I think you're going to detail tonight, is the installation of the placards that tell the story of the individuals. And so, welcome, welcome this evening, whomever would like. Let me note for the record, so everybody knows, Eddie Crawford, hello, Caitlin Chang, Jenito, and Natalie Barry as well. So thank you, thank you all for coming. Is any one in particular going to present, or? Okay, welcome. Okay, let's make sure that mic is on, just one sec. Okay, there, it's behind us. Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, perfect.
Natalie Barry, I'm here as the President of the Hastings Historical Society and a member of the Clark Commemoration Project. So, for those of you who aren't familiar, I think most of you are, the Doctors Clark were two of our most renowned former residents. They were married psychologists. They did a lot of things, but they were very well-known for their DALL test, which figured prominently in the 1954 Supreme Court decision Brown versus Board of Education. And that decision basically said that segregating children in public schools was unconstitutional. So, we're going to talk about Phase Two. We will go over Phase One, for those of you who don't remember what it was all about, but Phase One is done. As Alex said, we did that, or it was organized throughout the village and the schools and the libraries and the Historical Society in 2023 and 2024, because 2024 was the 70th anniversary of Brown versus Board of Education. So, the Clark Committee, as was just stated, is Eddie Crawford, Caitlin Chang, Jen Ito, myself. We also have Susan Janchil here. She's our landscape architect, so she will be speaking a little bit later. And I'm going to turn it over to Eddie.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Natalie. So, slide two, please? That was right there.
It's on the podium?
Okay. As was already stated, the Clark Commemoration Project is divided into two phases, a Phase One and a Phase Two. Phase One is the co-naming of Mount Hope Boulevard, which would be co-shared with Doctors Mamie and Kenneth Clark Way. That was completed in October of 2023. In Phase Two, we'll have the installation of interpretive panels at both ends of the Doctor Mamie and Clark Way. So that would hopefully be finished by 2025 this year. Okay?
Thank you.
Could I have the next slide? I'm Jennifer Ito.
Hey, Jen, how are you?
Hi, thanks for having us tonight. I'm just going to quickly go through the Phase One portion of our project, which was the co-naming of Mount Hope Boulevard, Doctors Mamie and Kenneth Clark Way. And I think Alex and Natalie summed up that this was a multi-pronged collaborative effort with the Hastings Historical Society, our village, the school district, the library, and Kenneth B. Clark Academy up in Dobbs. And I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to Greg Smith and Dr. Janice Mateo Toledo, who are incredible partners on the school end. They organized a lot of things behind the scenes. And I also wanted to thank Dr. McCursie, who's not here today. He took every opportunity to talk about the Clarks and write about the Clarks, so there's a community update from Black History Month in 2023. And last but not least, I want to say thank you to the students and the staff, because they contributed in many, many ways. From artwork that was put up during the October events and these articles that I found written by our Farragut and High School students. And then, so in September 2023, a month before our events, the Hastings Historical Society prepared these really nice panels about the Clarks to kind of lay the groundwork for the students. And these panels were put up in the Hastings High School lobby. And then, at the end of September, thanks to Dr. Moise Zsamanski, we had a public webinar hosted by the Brown v. Board of Education National Historic Site by a park ranger there. He broadcast from Topeka, Kansas, and this webinar was open to the entire Hastings community. So, thank you, Dr. Zsamanski.
So, to recap what was actually done in Phase One. In October of 2023, we had Minnie Jean Brown, who was one of the Little Rock Nine. She came here to Hastings back in 1957, lived with the Clarks after being expelled from the Little Rock Central High School. And she came and spoke to the elementary school kids here at Hillside, Farragut Middle School, and also the high school students. They were interviewed. She was interviewed by them, and it was quite a welcoming homecoming, in essence, for her, since she was formerly living in Hastings back, as I said, in the 1950s. The other aspect of that commemorative event was the street signing ceremony, which was held at the James Harmon Community Center. It was attended by the Clark relatives and other dignitaries. And as Jen said a little while ago, there was a lot of artwork that was contributed by the Hillside students here and also the Kenneth B. Clark Academy students. A month after that, in November of 2023, the Hastings Historical Society had an annual exhibit distributing, actually showing, that is, the Clark legacy. And that lasted from November of 2023 to October of 2024.
And my name is Caitlin Chang, hello. And here we are at Phase Two, which is the creation of these interpretive panels. And there will be three panels. The first panel will be at the intersection of Lefergy and Mount Hope, and that's geared towards elementary students. And that is on village property. And then, we have two additional panels that'll be at the intersection of Farragut and Mount Hope. In a minute, you'll see a photo of the actual site. And that will be geared towards older students and adults. And you'll note it says it's on school property, but we recently learned it's actually not on school property. Fun. And so, it's actually county land. And we'll talk a little bit more about that soon. So, yeah, interesting.
Thank you.
Why don't you take that?
Yes.
Okay. So, here's Phase Two permissions, because we had to go to the village for the one panel at Lefergy and Mount Hope. And we got permission from the village back in June of 2023. We spoke to Bill and to Maureen and various people in the school district back in July of 2023, and got an agreement that this was a great idea to have the two panels, outdoor panels at Farragut and Mount Hope. Recently, we did find out that because Farragut Avenue is a county road, the setbacks are quite significant. There are 10 to 15 feet on each side of the road. So, strangely, they consider the property that we're considering for the site to be their property. So, now we have to get permission from Westchester County. And we've been told that it's probably a shoo-in, but we still haven't heard from them. So, we're hoping very shortly to hear that they are willing to let us commemorate two of the most famous civil rights activists in Westchester County on their property. So, in terms of the panel and site design, we're reviewing the language and the text for the panels. They're just about done. We have to get those to the Clark family for review. We have a graphic designer, Laura Smythe. And we have a landscape designer, Susan, who's with us today. You'll meet shortly. And we have a contractor, Benny Bolfamonte. And I just want to point out, these are the same folks that the Historical Society used for the Revolutionary Walk installation, which is at Broadway and Warburton, and it commemorates the Battle of Edgar's Lane. Here's the site. So, basically, it's across the street from the Farragut complex. You'll see there's the crosswalk going over to the Burke Athletic Fields. To the right would be the painted rock that the kids like to redo every so often. And the parking lot is ahead of you. So, it's that little piece of green space between the two walkways. So, it's not a very large site. It's probably like 12 feet across. And you'll see the design is like a semicircle right there. And this is Susan Janchil, our landscape designer.
Welcome.
Hi. Hi, thank you so much. Again, Susan Janchil, my company name is Aspect 120 Landscape Architecture. I am a River towns person. I raised my kids in Ardsley. My office is in Irvington. I, as Natalie just said, I worked on other sites within Hastings. And I love that they came to me to think about this site, because it's really smart to just start creating this vocabulary that the Historic Society is creating. We worked with the Committee for the Revolutionary War, the Edgar's Lane Committee. That was completed, I think, a year and a half or two years ago, and I think it was really well-received. We want to use the same vocabulary here. What you're looking at on the screen is basically a very simple design of a Bluestone Plaza, similar to what we have at Revolutionary Walk, and then a small retaining wall that will back up the two panels, as you see there. The drawing looks a little bit... How do I say this? We had two different designs, and we sort of reduced the size of the design. We wanted to go further out, but then we noticed that the lower asphalt path was being used for some sort of vehicles, and we didn't want to disturb that. We didn't want vehicles to go over the Bluestone, so we reduced the scale of the design. We could also show you the original design as well, if you'd like to see that. So, this is sort of like a little collage of the new design. You know, so I apologize for that. But you could understand what it is. It's a little retaining wall with some plant material behind it. And it's, the people who are crossing the street encounter this little plaza with the plaques there. Simple, basic, but does the job, I think.
And that's our presentation. So, if you have any questions, we'd love to answer them. I also wanted to say that we are hoping to get this done before school starts in the fall.
It's wonderful. Wonderful. Thank you, thank you all. Open up for any comments or questions?
Well, I just want to make a, I just want to thank you all. This is, this is so wonderful. And it's so nice to have something wonderful to hear about, to think about, to be proud of. But this is so exciting, and I think you've done such a, obviously, a service to the Clarks, but, and to the community, and I'm sure it was a wonderful, it's been a wonderful project to work on.
Well, and I just, I want to say two things. These three folks behind me came to the Historical Society and said, "We want to commemorate the Clarks." So, they sort of started the whole thing going. And I also want to say that this was, this Phase Two part of the project is fully funded by the Lee Elliott family in honor of Bob Elliott. So, we're very grateful that we have this angel donor who is willing to fund this whole thing.
Well, it's fabulous, and it's such a tribute to the history of Hastings and even to when the Clarks lived here and there was a whole African-American
Neighborhood.
Community. As a part of Hastings and sort of part of the history of our town. But just knowing what they've done, and certainly as a psychologist, I personally feel like it's just such a wonderful... And they were at City College, where I spent, I don't know, 80 years of my life or something? But anyway, I just want to thank you. It's really, it's just such a pleasure.
Yeah. Can I second that? So, I feel like, especially nowadays where things seem so ephemeral and things just come and go. I think it's so important for the kids to realize that history, like, sorts of things, history reaches into the present. Decisions made in the past reach us very vitally in the present. And so, that's kind of the way, you feel it, they see it. It's really important. So, it's a wonderful project, and I thank you all for the effort you put into it. And if you need, I don't know, we can render anything, but if you need any help with the county, certainly, reach out to the school.
We're hoping it's a quick yes, but if they give us trouble, we might need a letter of support or something.
I think we could do that.
That'll be forthcoming, sure.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
This is fantastic and so thrilling, and I can't wait to see these pieces up, because it's another part of learning in our community. And I was hoping that maybe our elected officials could help you get through the county.
All right, also.
Right, so maybe...
Good point, yeah.
An email.
We'll see.
It's just so important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, David, of course.
I have a question. I echo everything that my board members said. Phil, you want to join us, or?
Oh, you're early.
Yeah, you're feeling good? Can you go back just a couple of slides of the photograph of the site? Yeah, so you said that you scaled back the size of the plaza, what are you calling it? The Bluestone? Because there are some vehicles that use this asphalt walkway?
Yeah, that was witnessed by the contractor and some of the members here.
Is it like a small snow removal or some?
Or like the little gators that the coaches are using.
The coaches to transport materials?
Yes, yes.
So...
The golf cart, yeah.
The golf cart, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, I just wanted to ask the school, like, logistically, because there is a parking lot and a road that goes up the other way. There isn't a curb cut there. Should we be scaling back the significance of this project because we're taking a shortcut to get to the field? Or should we not be, for safety concerns, be using this road path that really is a walkway that doesn't have a curb cut? So, I'm just thinking, logistically, these curb cuts don't line up with these walkways.
You mean to use the other path down the road?
Well...
Use like the driveways.
Where, like, where should the golf cart really be entering this? And I don't want to...
Right, and that was a discussion amongst us.
And you have a secondary larger, not larger, but you're taking into account, because there is some kind of vehicular usage.
Right.
Should we be saying, "Hey, use the driveway and go around so that we're not damaging this new plaza," which impacts your design?
Well, we were actually standing in front of the site, and the gator thing came by. And we went, "Wow." And it used the left-hand path that you could see right there. It went right across the crosswalk and then up and straight into the Burke playing field. So, what Susan's saying is, we would leave that undisturbed.
Yeah.
Just leave it. But, you want to explain the other?
Yeah, I'll explain the other. So, as a landscape architect, I came into this looking at that site saying, "Why are there two paths there?" Right? Like, that does not, my interpretation is that there was one path there, and then kids were cutting across and making sort of a desire line in the snow, in the grass, and they said, "Let's just pave it over." That's how I read the site. So, my instinct was to actually join these two paths. And we could send you the other version of this, but you could almost see it. I sort of, if you see where we put the concrete walkway, it sort of made that larger arc, and we made a couple of steps going up to the higher level. So, it was a little bit more robust. I think either way works. We just didn't want to get in the way of how facilities work here, so we pulled it back. But one part that's still on this drawing, because it's sort of underneath the drawing, one way to address the vehicle access was I was suggesting that you make a drop curb from the parking lot there and let them get that way. It's a longer way. It's a smarter way for safety of everybody, but that's not really our purview. You guys could tell us.
Well, I'm also thinking, like, looking ahead, there could be one of these, what if gators coming down the road, or putting some vegetation, blocks view? Shouldn't be going on the sidewalk, and there's a kid wa... Like, vehicles should be where vehicles should be and not be on sidewalks. So, I think that's a conversation for us to have, which absolutely impacts you.
And I think we could send you the other drawings.
Yeah.
That'd be useful to connect. That's a good idea, and to sort of put the ends together.
I get it, you go up Mount Hope, and it's right there, and you don't want to go all the way up and around.
No, I think I agree with what you're saying. I think we could certainly look at that. Because again, it was exactly how you said it came to be. Is that how? Yeah, walking through there. And then I think prior to that, they didn't need the gator.
And you see them all around, like, all the cubs through, the school areas where kids are just making their own tracks, and adults are.
Yeah, exactly.
We'll provide you with the drawings, and you could decide whether you want the curb cut in the parking lot, or you want to use the existing path, whatever works.
Yeah, that'd be great. And you said that you're looking for September, or before school starts to have it. So, it would be like over the summer installation. Okay, so there's definitely time. It's a good idea.
I just have an additional question about the design. You have this low-stone wall. Is there a seating area for reflection, too, that's not represented there? Or is it just?
It's just the wall, but it is the height of a seat wall.
18-inch, yeah, so like dining chair, 18.5 inches.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Good thoughts, thank you. Teresa, you had something?
Just thank you for having an idea and bringing it to life and being dedicated to it throughout the whole process. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Thank you all. Thank you all. We look forward to seeing it.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Welcome back. So, we've moved the student report up. Again, feel free to stay as long as you like, for your convenience. So, whoever would like to go first, feel free.
Absolutely. All right, so tomorrow is the opening of the high school's AP art show. The amazing works of art are featured in the high school lobby, and they are so, so, so phenomenal. There's all sorts of different mediums and all different kinds of artwork on display. And it is so beautiful, and it just totally brings the lobby to life. So, I would totally recommend that if you get the chance, just stop by, poke your head in, and take a quick stroll. It's totally worth it. Just a reminder that this Thursday is the PSAT for all of our sophomores. This is now a digital exam, so we're still working through everybody learning how to do that. APs are now also going hybrid and digital, so truly in a new age. It's generally from around 7:30 to 11:30 in the morning, so good luck to all of them. And the middle school's 6th through 8th grade spring musical is going to be on Friday and Saturday. This is High School Musical Two. So, we got number one in the first half of the year, and now we're finishing up our storyline. They left us on a cliffhanger last time. So, these young performers are going to put forth an amazing, amazing show. So, definitely come out and support all of these fantastic people. And lastly, seniors are out starting on Friday, May 16. So, we're in the building through our AP exams, but from Monday, the 16th through Friday, June 13th, we will be completing our internships. So, if anybody doesn't know what that is, it's this awesome opportunity where all of our seniors get a month to go and do an internship in their area of choice. So, I am actually going to be sticking in this very building, and I will be spending May and June assisting in Ms. McCabe's kindergarten classroom. So, I am very excited, and I know a whole bunch of other people have some really, really cool things lined up, so it's an awesome opportunity.
That's great.
So, this is just an update for the middle school, where it's the 5 through 8 New York State ALA assessment, which is the state exam that the middle schoolers take each year. And it doesn't impact their grade, and there is an opt-out part, but it honestly is really helpful to try and get into the flow of how New York State exams work. And I was not allowed to opt out, so even if I wanted to. But honestly, it helped me with some test-taking and learning how to adjust. And then, May 1st, which is next Thursday, I believe, is the Hastings High School Spring Concert, which is actually really exciting, because both me and Kai will be playing. And it's sadly the seniors' last concert before graduation. But it's honestly going to be really fun, and we've all been working really hard with early morning practices. And I actually can't wait to see what the other groups have in store. So, I really hope you all attend, because it's going to be amazing. And then, finally, AP exams. So, these are starting on Monday, May 5. And any juniors and seniors who are enrolled in AP courses will take their exams in the morning or in the afternoon of the day that they are assigned. So, for example, AP Chem is on May 6, so that is in the morning. And there is an option to opt out of classes for the rest of the day, which, fingers crossed, I will be allowed to, because my teachers have said they don't want us coming in. They don't have any work for us. And so, that's going to be definitely a lower attendance, but...
That's great. Thank you. A quick question. So, the AP art stuff, that's up until like the budget vote? Or how long does that stuff stay up for?
I'm actually not sure how long it's up. I know that it was just put up recently, so it'll definitely be up for a little bit. But I'd assume that unless there's something else that has to be put up, it should hang out for a little bit.
Okay.
I think that's different. There's like the art show, and then there's like the AP art show.
Okay, it's AP only?
And there's like the district art show.
Right, the one that, because when we vote, when we vote, there's always the other side of the gym.
The district art show is usually in the gym, as opposed to lobby.
Right, okay, okay. Someone else had a question for me. They're wondering if, I don't know if anybody knows the answer. If you're not taking the PSAT, asking for a friend, do you have to come to school? Are there regular classes if you're not taking the PSAT? Does anybody know? I assume there are, because then otherwise kids would just like...
I do know they have to go to classes after they take it, and they're even...
I do know they have to go to classes after they take it, and they're even like.
Okay, so it makes sense.
Yeah, I believe so. Yeah, I believe it's the, I believe it's the classes that are testing are not the ones in session.
Okay, okay, it makes, it makes sense, but I just wanted to clarify. Thank you both very much, thank you. Moving on. So we're going to start off with the, we're going to be voting as a board on the adoption of the twenty-five, twenty-six school budget. Are we presenting the sort of summary of final details on this, or what's our?
I mean, I, we could do that if you'd like. It's posted there, we've, I think, been through the details quite clear with all of you. The sort of final, final is there for the public record and you to see. I don't know that we need to go through this unless there's particular questions.
Well, I threw it, but if you have just, there was one slide that, let me see if I can find which one it is, just to have sort of the summary. Sorry, side three. Just to put it up, so we have the numbers.
I mean, the overview would be, from the administration's standpoint, we, a lot of work has gone into this. We respect greatly the board's inquiry, the board's deliberation, the board's questions. We very much appreciate the input, questions, shared concerns from staff, family, students. We've worked really hard to respect the taxpayers by staying within that tax limit, which meant, and then sorting through how to keep going now from the oldest to youngest ages of students, keep our high school whole. Andy Kleiman, working with department chairs and others, did an exceptional job to thread that needle this year. So we are replacing fully those three retirees. Fully does mean some different things. For example, math, it's a combined point five, point five to get to the one point oh, and other things. But we do know within, from the faculty and staff, they are supportive of the high school. This continues to be then second for FMS, a very important moment to really invest in the middle school. Look at some very longstanding concerns, questions, very hard-working faculty, staff, how to help bolster that in some very systematic ways. That's been laid out in great detail for you. And then coming to our youngest, feel very good at Hillside, what we've been able to continue and maintain here. Special Ed, it's a growth budget for Special Ed across the district. So athletics, sound and strong, arts, music, theater, sound and strong. So overall, we feel this is a very, very good budget. The newsletter that will be done next week for the residents will feature, this is a very good budget, tax compliant, and also getting a lot of good work done. You do know and need to know and need to focus on that we are looking at a number of future years, it will be a challenge. We've laid that out in great detail, it's in the public record. Maureen's worked particularly hard to make sure you see that, because at least in New York State, it is required that you look as a board, five years down the road, meaning that inclusive of those five years. And that's a very important requirement. So that would be my summary. I would urge you strongly to vote to adopt this budget, and we will then go to work to present the facts and let people vote their conscience in the community. We can't say vote yes or no, we just bring the facts and allow people then to vote their conscience on this.
Yeah. Any open up for questions, comments? For me, you know, one of the things, when we look at, you know, we look ahead, five years, as you said, but also looking back, which we've kind of gone through a lot, one of the interesting things for me, seeing this, this budget was probably the most complex budget that I've seen in my four years on the board. How much legwork it took, how much iteration it took, how many, how many people were involved down through the schools. And one of the things, just factually, that we looked at was, you know, since the pandemic, against inflation that's ran at about four point five percent per annum, the tax levy in Hastings has gone up about two point seven five, I think is what the number was, two point eight percent per annum, which just shows that the amount of work that goes into stretching the dollars that we have in the district, and not trying, trying not to just throw it on the taxpayer. And that's never been the ethos in this, in this village, or in this district, and I can, especially this year, the amount of stuff that people don't see, the legwork that goes into trying to make things work. And as you rightly noted, as a board, one of the baselines that we set is this has to be a tax cap compliant budget, you know, no matter what difficulty that is. And that was a standard that you all met, even after you had to go back and reiterate it and reiterate it again. So, you know, it's just a good feeling when the sort of the process produces a good outcome. You know, it's, you always wish it could be even better, or cost even less, or, but it's, it's a realistic outcome that supports the students, it supports the village, and so I'm very happy to vote, vote yes on this one, so. Open up any other comments or questions? No? Okay. Is there a motion to approve our budget for twenty-five, twenty-six?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
She's on a, should I get her?
Oh, I didn't know she was.
She's on a call.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't notice Jody wasn't here, so.
Maybe we just, we just let her know that we're.
Okay, why don't we just let her know, we can revote it then, yeah. Good catch, Catherine. Okay. Okay, sorry, I didn't, I didn't notice that. So. Just give her a moment and see. Want to jump down to business items?
No, I said that if she was the lady.
Okay, let's see.
If I wanted to vote on the other.
Is there any good information in the twenty-twenty-five facts and figures pamphlet?
I have them.
It is interesting.
Anything, any good pages to turn to?
Just learn how all the other districts, how big they are, and like how they function, it's interesting. Sorry, Jody.
I got it, I'm.
You okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
How big they are.
So we'll, we'll revote now that Jody's here. So I just, we had, are there any comments or questions about the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six?
We're voting on the budget?
Yeah, it's the wrong question.
Have other people spoken?
Just a little bit.
It wasn't most, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I think it's been, as always, is quite a process. Somehow we always get somewhere. But, and I want to, saying particularly to the people who worked hard on this, Bill Maureen, who's worked tirelessly on this, and everyone else who's had input into the process, I think, all things considered, I think we're at a very good place. I think we take care of the basic needs that we need to for next year. I'm very thankful that parents paid attention and got involved when they needed to, and that we were able to take and really rethink things. And I'm hopeful that things in each school are going to be as best as they can in this particular climate. And given all the added demands and costs that, I mean, I can remember, it's like, every year, Maureen, I feel like, I was thinking back to this, you know, to, I don't know when my first year on the board was, two thousand and eight or something. And it's always like, oh, well, the, the cost of insurance and the cost of benefits, you know, are up, and that's really, it's like every year, but it, it just so cuts into the pie. And it's, it's, there, those are important things, obviously. But we also have to be sure that we're meeting all the instructional needs and taking care of teachers. And I know also, this is in the context of a year where in the process of negotiation with teachers for their contract, which I feel is really important, and I feel strongly about. So I guess, all things considered, and the fact that we were able to make adjustments for the high school, I hope parents feel comfortable and sort of trust that in what we've communicated about classes that will be taught and not losing electives or APs or, and that if there are issues along the way, well, you know, I don't know that we'll have to deal with it, but some of you will have to deal with it. Yeah, and we will, I mean, that's what we do, that's the way it goes. But I think this is a very good place to be, and that we could come in under the tax cap, which is always, always, you know, and so I hope we'll be able to pass this budget, because we know what happens when we don't. The consequences for the schools, for the community are huge. In that way, I feel like we were really respectful, even though it means paying a little more in taxes, that is all of our civic responsibility, to be able to support public education.
Absolutely, well said.
Yeah, well said.
Thank you for saying that.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Anyone else want to follow up before we revote? No? Is there a motion to approve our budget for twenty-five, twenty-six?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, thank you.
And if I may thank the board for, I really appreciate all the questions. Anyone who's worked with me behind closed doors, I say the board, their job is to bring the questions, their constituents bring the questions, and we have to honor and respect those. And sometimes I have a big, deep voice with a lot of passion, so some people think I'm angry, and I'm actually very happy. So, but I really do appreciate the due diligence of the board, and it's truly on behalf of our students, and we're in a multi-year effort here, and we'll, we'll keep at it. So, but please keep bringing the questions. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Bill. Moving on to, we're voting to accept the findings of the secret resolution, the negative declaration, which again is positive. Are there any questions or comments? I would remind, so the board had some follow-up questions with the architects and with LA Group, and they provided answers, which we read through. So were there any additional concerns, questions about what's in the secret document and the negative declaration? No?
I would just say, thank you for all the answers. They did kind of cite the regs, that was something that came up in a number of different, so they gave us the details around what governs the water and all of that, environmental impacts, et cetera. Just one note that we said the last time, but it's worth repeating, the lights are in there, not because we are scoping them in there, but because we wanted to kind of evaluate all the possibilities at the time, but the lights are currently not going to be a part of the project, but that's why the reference is there.
Good point, good point. One thing I found interesting of the reply, when we were talking about, I think it was your question about drainage from the field, and that they detailed that because it's an artificial field, the drainage starts immediately, right under the field. So, you know, and it's, some of the, the problem associated with sort of too much water on a natural surface, it's all controlled from, as soon as it drops, it's controlled immediately, which I thought was sort of interesting, just to, hadn't really thought about that. But I think they did a good job in being very thorough in citing, you had asked about if there was any documentation about having wetlands that were adjacent to fields and with the water management had been studied, and they cited a bunch of cases there, you know, reports, so it was well documented, I think they did a good job. Any other questions or comments about this? No? Is there a motion to approve the secret resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
I, I had my last turf argument with my daughter, I think, maybe, I don't know, over Easter dinner, which all she kept saying to me is, Mom, you don't play. You don't play soccer. And I kept saying, what about the environment? You went to a nature preschool, you grew up in a nature preschool. I don't care about that. I want to play. And then she said about the survey, she said, I took it three times, because I play in three sports.
Uh-uh.
I rest my case, your honor. But I thought that was interesting, too, because, okay, that's three times the same kid, right? But also, she wanted her voice amplified three times.
It's not like voting for player of the week, that you could go on and vote multiple times.
Right, right, right. But, and, you know, and of course, she's invincible, so when I talk about health stuff, you know, we haven't gotten that far in the prefrontal cortex, so.
Yeah.
But are you going to talk about stuff? Returf?
Yeah, I think, I think it's, we're going to move on to the, after this, to the bond, and then we are going to talk about that.
Exciting.
Yeah, sure. What does she play besides, she plays soccer, and what are the other two?
Lacrosse, and she runs track.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, Mom, you don't play.
But all the games are ringed out this past, two weekends, like during the.
That's true, yeah, there's a lot of ringings, that's true. Moving on to the bond resolution, so the previous meeting, April seventh, we talked about sort of the dimensions of the language, and then legal counsel for the district took our guidance, and then constructed the actual language that's going to show up on, on the bond itself. We kept the three-part structure, which we had detailed last time, so it's going to be voted on individually, but conditionally. And we're going to turn it over to Dr. McChrystine a moment, because one of the things, as the board knows, we're continuing to look into new products that are coming out to satisfy, you know, the artificial turf idea, and so that's ongoing. So the language in the, for the bond is going to be specified in a way that it lets us continue to keep on doing the research and the due diligence that we're planning to already. So I think Dr. McChrystine's going to get into that a little bit before we, before, if you're ready or not, but are there any questions regarding the bond language as it, as it appears here?
If I might just, even as the father of a college soccer coach and someone in global soccer management right now, my two oldest, I, I want to put the cart before the horse here, which is, the first proposition is for the fundamental, I'm going to use a technical term, guts of our building, Farragut complex. We, Hastings, and we will make the facts known, people will vote the way they weigh the vote, but that eleven million and change is a far smaller number than we need. And we are, we are behind many of our area communities investing in our facilities, and it keeps happening. So we purposely have set this up so that we really hope we can make the case, and people will vote their conscience, but that, that we need to invest in particularly the Farragut complex at this point. And then the second language here, and I think it's the importance of the way it's structured, and I thank Maureen for working so hard with you and the attorneys to get it this way, is then that second one is emphasizing the need for instructional space. It's not about a new cafeteria, it's about a bad location for a cafeteria that is, we now know, fifty percent smaller than it should be per code for the population in that facility. So in a sense, we have a win-win. Get that now old, out-of-date, out-of-code cafeteria out of the way, so we can come back with as many as five or six new classroom spaces.
That's what I was going to ask, how many additional classrooms?
Yeah, in the Q and A, and we'll put that out, I mean, there's been a lot of confusion, so I'll say it's confusion out there, but it's about five or six additionally new, just by that space.
Middle school space, classrooms.
Yes, and then adding space over, and there's the FAQ that you have that's now in the public record, we'll be emphasizing that. But again, that second opportunity to vote is about instructional space and accessibility. That is not a handicapped, accessible building. I warned you about my tone. This is a constructive, happy tone, but yet we have to have an accessible school building.
Could I just?
That's what that second is about, and then later we'll talk about the athletics, that's the third question. But those first two are so vital to where we are in terms of the safety, well-being, and quality instructional space and accessibility for our students.
No, just that my daughter had a broken leg, and it was very difficult to get around the school building, and she had to maneuver on her butt up and downstairs, and it's just, it's not how it should be, and we can do better as a community. And if kids can't come to our district because it's not accessible, that's really a change we need to make if we truly want to be an inclusive place to all people.
Yeah. Dr. McChrystine brought up a point, which is also in the material that Land and LA Group provided to us, because Teresa, you had a question, I believe, was how small was the cafeteria? And to Dr. McChrystine's point, by New York State code, it's actually fifty percent smaller than what would be specified today to, for the population that the school has, which I think New York State listed as ten fifty-eight. I think they might have been just counting students, but so that was a, that was an eye opener. And the thing that you had asked about, oh, I'm sorry, Jody, you mentioned the, the new classrooms, it's a twenty percent increase in the dedicated instructional space for the middle school. So it doesn't completely close the gap from the middle school and the high school, but it's, it's about a fifty percent increase of, wipes away about fifty percent of the gap, space-wise, instructional space. Any other questions? Or we want to talk about the? Do we want to talk about the field stuff a little bit, or?
It's, I mean, up to the board.
Yeah, so.
Absolutely. We've said this a lot, but I just wanted to underscore the 47% reimbursement from New York State. It's basically, we're getting it for half price when you kind of factor that in. That is at risk of going down dramatically or even going away next year. So once we lock in that 47% kind of off and that comes back to us, once the vote happens, it locks in. That doesn't have a risk in the future. So I think people really need to hear that a lot to understand, it's a unique time now to take advantage of that because it could change next year.
Yeah, it's a good point. Sure.
Both the 47 and the fact that we don't lose it with, you know, the next governor that's elected or something.
Right. It's all very subject to change, and costs will go up as well, and the needs are not going to change, and things are going to break, et cetera, but the 47% is really important.
Yeah, just in perspective, the inflation, I mean, inflation's not a surprise, but one of the things we looked at, when we went back and looked at the bond from the year 2000, that was a $10 million bond. When you plug it in the calculator and you adjust it to today's numbers, it was about $17.5 or $18 million. So, you know, it adds up. I mean, we wouldn't wait that long, but your point is well taken, and the costs obviously only go up. So, and without the reimbursement also. Yeah.
What Bill was talking about, about the ADA compliance, I don't know where the school falls on being a barrier-free facility. I know those are percentages that the city does in schools. I don't know if we do that in Westchester. It's every area of the building is, you're 100% barrier-free if every area of the school is accessible to anyone who could come into the building. So this leads, my goal for the long term, is that any student can access any area of the school. And this leads us in that direction, right? And we can work on other areas of the building as we go along in the future and upgrades happen, but to have an entryway that is not barrier-free, to me, is the worst place to not be ADA compliant. At the entrance to the building, we're saying that certain students can't access this building because, for a multitude of reasons. So I think that many parents, many community members should really think about the student that can't even enter the building because of the way the entryways are currently.
Yeah, it's a good point. I mean, I also, I do think about this sometimes, when parents move here, you know, tend to be, tend to move here at a time when their children are coming to Hillside, and then they don't even realize what it's like, you know. I mean, it's a real issue, and it is a real issue. It affects actual people that live here, actual families and actual students, so I'm glad you're highlighting that. Sure. Jody? Oh, I'm sorry.
I would just say, in terms of that accessibility, not only, even if we could get a child into the building who is in a wheelchair or on crutches, can we get that child out in an emergency, you know? And can we get many of our middle schoolers out if they are jam-packed in the hallways like they are? I mean, I really think it's a safety issue that, you know, it's like this in the hallways. And Alex knows I feel very passionately about the breakout rooms, which community members have very much criticized as the sort of like, I don't know what they think they are, some luxurious cafes for our students to sit and, you know, iterate, but, which would be nice, too.
Teachers to hang out.
Right, but they're not. They're rooms where therapy will happen. They're rooms where speech pathologists will have small groups or one-on-one or occupational therapists. And it happens, like, it happens in many schools where there's not a room. So you find a closet, a janitorial closet, and you convert it into an OT space, and it's really inappropriate. And we need to have adequate rooms that are welcoming with windows for children. And that's not too luxurious an ask of the community to, you know, fund. This is a way of providing an adequate education through our facilities. So this bond will directly impact for the positive children who receive special education services, not to mention the testing room that will be created for students who receive testing accommodations, such as separate space, extended time, having questions read aloud to them, being able to dictate their answers. This has to happen somewhere.
Yeah. You know, you bring up a really interesting thing that we don't tend to talk about, which is, over the years, so I could think, and this is something that's important for, I think, older people in the community to know, certainly since the time when my kids were here. I think the special ed population, the number of kids who receive services, has increased a huge amount. Somebody could be more specific.
20%, I think.
The classification rate is 20%. It's almost double what it was 20 years ago.
Right, so 20 years ago.
It'd be like 12%, of a smaller population.
Right. Okay, so.
I would say in pure numbers, it's likely doubled. I would agree with Alex.
So it's doubled.
According to the 2025 facts, shade is 16%.
16, it is 16.
16% for the district.
So I want to say that it's really important that people are aware that it has doubled, like, since 20 years ago. My older son graduated high school in 2005. And with that comes both an impact on the budget, a huge impact when we're talking about the budget, what we need. It certainly contributed to the needs that led to the building of this space. But the space requirements to provide all the services for students, it makes a huge impact. And I don't know that people are aware of that big change in the district. And I think it's really important that it's not minor. It's really a major, and we have, you know, those students need, are entitled.
They have the right, right?
They have the right. They should have places where they can have their, whatever services or testing accommodations. And I don't think we ever spell that out. We haven't spelled that out very clearly. I don't think people understand in a really concrete way what that means in terms of the space in the building. And to that point, and I was going to bring this up later, to your point, Bill, I, in my thinking about this and how I felt about supporting this, and certainly the first part, clearly there was like a no question, I'm actually feeling, given all of this, that the second part is almost not.
Yeah, me too.
Up for grabs here. The needs are so, the more you think about it and really pay attention, the needs are so huge in the district, and that's what that addresses, and not, you know, a beautiful cafeteria.
Well, because we have to be financial stewards of the district, too, which means supporting the infrastructure and the academic pieces so we can thrive now and in the future and that we don't fall apart, which I think is a key point that you're making. And we have to be academic stewards so that we're meeting the needs of an ever-changing landscape. And what you're talking about in terms of special education and the capital costs, the personnel costs, the programmatic costs, happens at Hastings, it's happening nationally. So if you look at districts and budget across Westchester, New York State, the nation, like, this is a huge cost increase that districts legally, we have to bear. This is our responsibility, so we have to look at it and really think forward to make it, so that we're in compliance, but we also make these students feel comfortable and that they can thrive and meet all of their goals and achievements. It's a good point.
Yeah, and we mentioned a little bit at the last meeting, but not everybody who's here, but, you know, again, the Village Comp Plan has a very direct, sort of positive bias towards increasing density, increasing the use of accessory dwelling units, and, you know, I said it before, between 2010 and the delayed census in 2021, '22, whatever it was, Hastings' population grew about 8%. And the forecast, so to speak, is that, you know, there's going to be continued pressure on the density. And to your point, you know, the, with the way our school is currently set up, size-wise, it's, you know, this big at Hillside and let's say that big at high school, but then it bottlenecks dramatically, 40% less. And so the breakage, that's going to be felt.
The same number of kids, though.
Right, no, right, but it's like, that is where, if there is, if there, it does come to be pressure from population increase, and sort of the dynamic is, if you have rental units, it's a different dynamic because people move in just before school starts, they suddenly show up. And if you have accessory dwelling units, people move out of houses and families with children can move into those houses. The point is, the middle school is a place where that, it's already kind of, it's under pressure, and it won't take that much more to sort of break in that spot. And then we're, you know, we'd be doing the same thing, but behind, years behind, with more disruption. So it's just kind of, as stewards of the outlook of this community, it's sort of an obvious point that it looks like we have to plan ahead, you know, because there is pressure there. So, a good point.
No, I was just thinking, basically, you know, we shouldn't be comfortable with the fact that the pre-existing status quo is a 60%, 40% differential in terms of the footprint that's occupied by the middle school. If there is that much more real estate in the high school, we have to do something to make, and we know that we have space constraints, and that doesn't even take into account whether or not the population of the village evolves. So just knowing that that is what we have been functioning under and that we have collapses, you know, I would say of like, our infrastructure, that is not something that I, as a trustee, feel comfortable with sitting on and allowing to fester. That is not doing right by the students of our, I mean, if, you know, if we think who the main customers, if you have to say, it would be the students who are being served by this district, and that is not okay. So I think that part two is just as important as part one. Yeah.
Yeah. Anyone else? No? So, no further ado. Is there a motion to approve the bond language?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Wait a minute, are we not talking about the third part?
Oh, we can, yes, so the field, so, do you want to specify the way we're going to look into it?
Yeah, so the third part is stated around a synthetic turf field for what currently is that the main, if you will, soccer field as well as a synthetic turf softball field. What we are continually digging into is what are the options there to be as environmentally strong as possible? We have to go through a bidding process, a competitive bidding process, and I know the Connecticut law is very, very well. If I, as a superintendent, talk with the board ahead of a bidding process in a public meeting where around a particular group, that group is really in a tough spot to compete. So I want to be very generic right now, but we have in the last week or two learned about an environmentally sound option that a district not far from us is going to be using, that's used in about 80 or 90 sites in the south, including public school districts, so I'm staying true to a refrain you've heard from me before, does not use crumb rubber. So that's been a major plus. So that is an option we will be looking at very, very thoroughly. And I think it's very important, if the board adopts, the resolutions is here, we will immediately put together, and it needs to start from the inside out, but a committee of the superintendent, I would suggest the board president and other board member to be determined, business official, director of facilities, director of athletics, to begin moving quickly to look at what the various options are. There's another one that has been very actively discussed in the community already that is quasi-synthetic but more non-synthetic. Again, there are issues there of the bidding process, et cetera, but I would think this committee could quickly look at that, look at this new option that is a very strong one, based on the due diligence of a neighboring district, and, but then come back to the board in the proper ways that relates to the New York State bidding processes, so we can talk about those options. But I want to assure the board that we are listening and we are looking, and we're trying to find that right balance of a space that's playable, provides the options we need for our athletes without the lights, and we're making that decision, you have. We are taking away 20 to 30% daily usage, so we just want to make sure that we balance that out and find a product that allows our student athletes to play, opens that up for the village more as an option, and is respectful of a mixed model here, natural and artificial, but we'd be bringing that back to you. But I just want to say that at this point, I spent a lot of the last week searching out options, and we, I mean, we're taking it really seriously if we can find that balance. And at the right point, we put that in the public, you'll discuss it, you'll debate it, the community will know, they can debate it, they can discuss it, so it'll be complete transparency.
Thank you for taking your break to research this.
There's a lot of emails.
This one was fun.
I'm so glad you had a break last week, right.
Right, but not a flood.
No flood.
That was awesome.
But the goal is, if there's other things that we're looking at and considering that might be environmentally more digestible for board members and the community, that we would have that all in place before the bond vote.
That, yeah, we want, yes, I want the, I, yes.
Okay.
Yes. I think, you know, again, we have to do this with due diligence, to do it correctly, and get public at the right moment.
Absolutely.
And I would hope to get public ahead of the vote, because I think, at least in some other communities who also are environmentally conscious, you know, we, Hastings should be proud about its environmental pride, but we're not the only place that has that pride. So a couple of things we're seeing out there now suggest, in other communities who have that same value system, they said, "Okay, this is a good option." We'll work through it.
Right, we just, it needs to be done before the vote because I think it will affect how people, it might affect how people feel voting on that third part.
Yeah, and to be clear, I, this language is not structured limiting us on that, say, crumb rubber issue, for example, which is a big one. Because, you know, I would prefer we can not have a field without crumb rubber, but I don't want to pin, recommending something to you, I don't want to pin you on that, because you may end up with something that isn't right. But I hope you hear me saying, I've heard clearly your commitment as a board, heard clearly the village's commitment to find, if we can, a good environmentally sound option. And this, you know, there are some now leading-edge products out there.
Do we have to worry that the costs could change?
We're running some numbers that would be modest. I mean, as Maureen will explain to you, with any of these three resolution areas, this is, there's going to be change orders, work changes along the way. Conceivably, this could be one, and we'd find ways to modify. You would vote on it, you would have to decide.
I was wondering how that works, and then we would just re-vote with the new information.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, again, I've lived this.
Well, each of the budgets have, in terms of, from a budget standpoint, there is, obviously, the way it's on the ballot, it's an all-in cost, including soft costs, but they have a design contingency as well as a construction contingency, so if there was a change to the design of, say, the field, some other alternate products, you know, being recommended, that would be covered under that, like, design contingency number, like, more, I mean, more or less, I would think, because I think that number's like 5% of the total cost. And then there's construction contingency, so typically, that's how districts, if there's, you know, after things are approved, if there's some tweak, because they kind of understand that those things naturally happen, so that's why they, when they break down the budget, they allow for a design contingency as well as a construction contingency, understanding there are things that evolve, when the designs evolve or the products that you may choose to select may be a little bit different than initially thought. But I think as long as the scope is more, like, doesn't change, which you're voting on, which is a new field, it's still with, you know, it's within that scope still.
So, I mean, what's helpful with certain options, again, doing, there's always the 11th hour and the work continues right up to any vote, and it will continue through. So some would say, "Why are we..." No, the work continues, you got to keep at it. So what's important with what I've come upon, again, with other input, is a district not far from us, that their community adopted a resolution, something like you did. They then went out and did the homework. They came upon this product, and then they were able to, through a committee process, the due diligence, bringing updates with board involvement to the public and community, could then bring the clarity that then helps the board decide and the community decide on the best option.
Yeah. I think also, an important point that we don't bring up enough, you mentioned the mixed model, because it's definitely the case in other communities that they do, like, you know what, we're going to turf all our fields and that's what we're going to do for money savings, whatever it might be, management. And that is, I want to really underline, that's never been the case with how this was approached. That's never the goal. The idea's not, "Well, we'll do some now and some later." This is really, you know, we've defined... This is really, you know, we've defined the problem, you know, we've had the athletic department define the problem, the hours when we've matched the capacity that we need from this, the fields to what the problem we need to solve. And so the idea is very much, Hastings is going to remain a mixed model. And children who don't even play sports, children who go to gym class will be on grass as well. It's not going to be turf only, nothing like that. So I think it's an important thing to underscore. So just to be certain, so the committee will start up kind of right away, you know, in the planning.
Tonight.
Tonight, no, no, yeah, exactly, immediately following the meeting.
In all seriousness, I would, we're going to be talking later on Thursday, just to get rolling.
Okay, so it's fast, yeah. Any other comments or questions?
I have a question about the lights because I, I think it's a bummer to lose all that playing time. But I also understand the neighborhood concerns about lights in backyards and kitchen windows. So the, the, you were mentioning that there, what still has the lights in it?
The SECRE.
Yeah, the SECRE that we signed off on, the environmental review included sort of the, the larger scope in case we put something in light lights.
But it's a hundred percent off the table?
Well, from a bond, it's not, it's not in the bond.
It's not in the bond. Okay, so bye-bye, no lights.
Bye-bye, no lights.
Okay.
I mean, if it helps a little bit, other communities not far from us have gone through the same discussion and, and, and putting in new turf fields that started out like we did the ideal because of that usage percentage, but then it pulled back for some of the same questions. And where they're at, then coming in later, you can come in later to add lights, it's expensive and that would require a, a later bond. There are a lot of questions. I, I think you've made a decision to listen to the residents here and find ways where you can economize that we still would be, if we can get the right playing surface, if we can have it be the two, we are many, many steps ahead of where we are in terms of usage time. So.
Okay.
I, but I hear, I hear it. I mean, it's a straight up economic time analysis, you know, in terms of ROI, return on investment.
Okay, thank you.
Of course. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a comment. I, I keep thinking about sustainability, right, the word just keeps popping into my head. And, and I think about sustainability as a spectrum, right, as degenerate, degenerative and regenerative and status quo. And pieces of degenerative systems of sustainability are doing nothing, right? Just letting everything kind of crumble and no infrastructure. And then there's status quo, just doing the bare minimum, but which really ends up costing more money in the future anyway. And then there's regenerative, right? How much are we putting in to save money later? And for me, the three parts of this bond are regenerative sustainability. And I feel that adopting all three parts of this bond is investing into this community, which will in turn, in the long run, save this district a lot of money. And I almost feel that we're not spending enough money to save the district money in the long run, right? As we brought the bond down from its highest point down to where we are now, we all didn't want to hit that high, high number. But now we're at a place where we're not thinking about regenerative. We're, we're somewhere between status quo and regenerative, right? So that's just sitting with me. And I think that we got to a good place where the community is engaged and the community is starting to see that if we think about how much money we're putting in and how much that is going to save us in the future and all the additional pieces of curriculum and academics and fiscal stewardship. I just want the community to, to really think about being regenerative while we're using a product that is plastic. And I'm not using regenerative in terms of, you know, oncology. But just thinking that this money is money well-spent and the school needs it and the students, they don't only desire it, they need it. And I'm in full support of all three parts of this bond.
I like that idea.
Yeah, I would, you know, it's interesting, there are communities that, you know, bond almost on a schedule. So they have smaller bonds that are every five, six years like that for that reason, that things don't build up. And one of the things we've sort of touched on a little bit is that, you know, this community was sort of, there was sort of energy coalescing around a bond, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, but then we had the great recession that put things off and kind of threw everything off a schedule. But there is a great case to be made, also just from equity standpoint for people who live here, that more frequent, smaller bonds are, are a better choice for some of the reasons you bring up, you know. And that's, you know, who knows where we're going to get to, but hopefully that's something that, that future boards could consider, sort of more regular, smaller investments, you know, and more targeted, you know.
Although then people feel like, you're doing a bond again, you're doing a bond again, you're doing another bond.
No, but there are a lot of communities where it's almost on a schedule every five, six years, you know, the small things, just so that you don't get these massive bonds and these big steps and the controversies and things like that, you know, so.
You know, I'd add to what you said that it also, for homeowners, I think it affects the value of, of your house, I think. I worry that there's a sense of deterioration at this point that will spill out. And, you know, I don't, I don't, I can't say that for sure, but that's sort of a, a vibe about it. But I agree with you about, I feel comfortable supporting all three parts of this. I'm, I want to thank you, Bill, for taking time on your much-needed break. And I, I think we all look forward to hearing what possibilities there are. And I feel, it makes me feel very hopeful that we might be able to come up with a solution that is palatable to people, palatable to me. I mean, I, I feel like, as I said in the last meeting, as far as the third part of the bond, I feel strongly that it should be put up for a vote. And I'm hoping now that I'll feel much personally more comfortable voting for it. As a board member, I feel comfortable voting yes to put it up for the vote. And for the, each individual, you know, citizen can vote and do their own due diligence and decide what they want to do. But it's our obligation to put up what's best for the schools. And now this is a very, kind of, I don't want to get too hopeful, but this is sort of a hopeful possibility that might be more, might just work better with the needs and concerns of the community.
Yeah, thank you.
Where, where did we start at the bond? How much was it originally? Eighty-something? No, a hundred and something, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was, that was the.
Well, I think if you, I think if you add, yeah, if you added up all the different, but I think, yeah, we started out, yeah.
I think it was like sixty-three.
Sixty-three.
And then it went down to like forty-eight or forty-three.
Yeah. I think we were looking at, right, like if we, because initially even with the fields, there was this kind of like a, more of a master plan kind of approach for the fields and for the Fargate complex. It also included some ideas around, which we, which they, we did use phase one, phase two. And if we were to add those together, that's where we were at that, that higher amount.
Yeah, I, I mean, there is, I've, I've now been here long enough that, and Marine will, there was a, an early, much lower number, but that was before we did the master planning. That's before we did the thorough look at what is, is got exactly, well, I can't get it out of my mouth, exactly going on. And then once that was done, that much lower number in the teens, which had been talked about.
The initial number was like.
Because we've been talking about this for about three years. So that low, so, and that number is, is out there in Hastings, so I respect how that number got out there.
Of course, yeah.
Because, you know, two and a half years ago, but that was.
Renovating the locker rooms and doing things.
Then we did the due diligence that had to get done through competitive RFPs, bringing in people who could do that very detailed analysis, the triangulation between L A N and the M F, and the P, all of that. That that then brought us to that larger number, the eighty, ninety million. And then listening, listening, we pulled it back down to what is really, and I, I like the way David, you talked about that mix of regenerative, that, that, if kind of the economy of the regenerative approach is where we've landed. So I just want to be clear on how this has evolved. And, and it's, it's exactly what's needed and it is, it's a, it's a modest ask as we look around at what's happening in, in, in other districts.
Just one last point. And also, I do want to take a moment to acknowledge your role in this and Dr. Somanski's role and Maureen Cabala because it takes stable district leadership to be able to get to this point and to do the studies, to collect the data, run the analysis to really realize what's the best fit and the best way to address the needs of our district. So I think, you know, reflecting on our work as a board and the work of our school and district leaders, I just am feeling a little grateful at this moment that we've had the stability so that we can put the care and attention into really supporting and affirming our schools. So thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point, for sure.
Although I do want to also say that I also think it takes a board working with the district leadership and to be able to get to this kind of point and that isn't always the case.
And if you're voting to adopt this structure, the work is only just begun.
That's true.
And, and, you know, you've lived this here in Hastings, Marina's lived this. I do know from multiple locations that you got to have strong board leadership on, on this going forward. And we've had that, so I mean, that'll need to continue.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, we've been semi-public about it, we're willing to do whatever it is and with whomever to get, get in front of it. So there'll be a lot of energy there. Any other questions, comments? No? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the language for our bond resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Thank you for being patient. We're going to open up for public comment. Do we, is anybody signed up or, okay, thank you. And Lucy, old time? Yeah. Good evening.
Hi, friends. Honestly, I'm just too short for this, for my own sanity. And I also set my timer, so I keep track. All right. Hi.
Hello.
I want to talk a little bit about a timeline. In two thousand seventeen, really important things were happening and we couldn't come up with a hundred of them. But for me, I was pregnant with my first child. He's here, no, at Hillside, he's in second grade. I know. Alex, I love, you said, decisions made in the past reach into the future. Yes. Also in two thousand seventeen, the Board of Ed sat here and received a presentation by Gravity Goldberg after a thorough audit. There wasn't any unifying ELA curriculum at Hillside, that's a problem. After that audit, they, I did the foil, I'm not uphining, I have this to share. There was an official presentation of, we'd like to do balanced literacy for you at Hillside. And I'm not sure if you guys had to vote or what the plan was, but it landed. And so when my son was a month old, balanced literacy became the official foundation of ELA at Hillside. So foundations was in place and that's a, and it continues. That is a K to three phonics program. But it's not the foundational piece. And in Hillside, foundations, the phonics, ends in grade two. I wish it continued to the termination of the program as it was designed, but I'm not in charge, so I just speak up. So that's an example of when I say that we're not doing science of reading with fidelity. We are doing science of reading because foundations is here, but it's layered on top of balanced literacy. And we're, the program we're using, we're not even using it as it was designed. So there's a mandate coming out for New York State. In September two thousand twenty-five, science of reading has to be in all of the schools. So now we're doing an audit and I'm so excited. So I'm worried that the presence of foundations is going to then be sold as evidence that Hillside does science of reading. We're all really educated people, like, how many people here have multiple graduate degrees? Like, we just, we know too much. So, like, I know that you guys can hold the nuance of this, of do we do science of reading? Do we do it with fidelity? So three-queuing is happening as recently as this year. My neighbors are upset, they're reaching out. I've developed this ridiculous reputation for knowing something about it. So now my neuropsychologist loves me because my friends are asking me for evaluations. My tutor loves me because I keep sending people to her, but that's a problem. Oh, God, I have like fifteen seconds. So we really can build on what's going well. My daughter, no three-queuing in her classroom. My son, heavy three-queuing, K and first, nine second. We can absolutely build on what's going well. We have things that are going well. This audit is an opportunity to build on it. Thank you and thank you for holding on to the nuance.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, also short. I'm Jetta Donovan Wilson, two hundred old Broadway. I'm mother to a current kindergartner and a future Hillside kindergartner next year. I am thrilled to find out that the district is pursuing an audit of science of reading practices for Hillside. This is a wonderful opportunity for the school to engage in collaborative reflection as a school community to ensure that curriculum, materials and day-to-day instructional practices all align to the most up-to-date research and evidence based on how children learn how to read. This will be a crucial step in Hastings schools being prepared to respond and comply with the new state regulations. I encourage the board to approve and support this effort. I have two suggestions that I would make to ensure that this audit fulfills its responsibility and opportunity to bring together a variety of data sources and engage stakeholders across the school community. Number one is to bring together a parent and caregiver focus group. This is something done very commonly in landscape analysis and audits in school districts as a part of the data collection of the audit. In order to get a full representation of student experience of literacy, a family and caregiver focus group can provide invaluable data on parent perspective on literacy practices and ensure that families' voices are provided value and space in the process. The second recommendation is that we ensure transparent sharing of a report from the audit. Perhaps that's already in the plans and I hope it is. As parents and families deserve to have ample information and understanding of the school's approach to reading instruction, I encourage the district to be transparent and candid in sharing any report and findings from the audit in addition to the action steps the district plans to take as a response. As I said, I am thrilled that the school is taking this first important step to understand both the important foundations we already have in place, the nuance, and to the nuance Maria spoke about, areas for growth to improve reading outcomes for all our students, and hope that these suggestions tonight serve to improve community support to, and engagement on this important topic. Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you. Hey, good evening.
Good evening, Daniel Lowes.
Just grab the mic and say, yeah.
I, I prepared comments and I'm just going to read the first part of the first sentence. In November two thousand twenty-four, in the November two thousand twenty-four rollout of the one hundred and twenty-one million dollar multi-year facilities plan. So you've, you've been having a discussion about that. And so I, I want to just spring off, off of that with two things. One is, there was a lot that I really did not love about that plan, particularly the fact that it just emerged sort of out of, in a way, out of nowhere as a, from, as a member of the community. I didn't like the amount either. But one of the things that I really did like about it was that it was a multi-year plan, that it was based on a master plan, it was a systematic look at the facilities, which I think is really important for the board to do and continue. And I think it's, it's going to be relevant in, now in the context of this bond proposal, that there be some discussion of that going forward because there were a lot of elements in there that were building structural elements, clearly things that over time will need to be addressed. And I think it's very important for the community to understand that what you're proposing is, is one phase, but there is, there will be, as you've just discussed, multiple phases. And that may be negative or positive from the standpoint of residents of the community. But I think from yours, from the way you are with the community, it's very important that you spell that out to the degree that you can. And you have a pretty good master plan there to work off of. So the second thing I wanted to say about that rollout, I think it was about that same time, it might have been in that same meeting, it was a communications plan, that was a preliminary plan, I think, the way it was labeled. And there's a lot of detail in that plan. It includes community engagement of various kinds. And the only thing I didn't like about that is the, because the timing seemed to be, we're going to do this after everything's decided, then we're going to use this as a way to convince the community that they should do what we're asking. You know, the, one of the lessons of the two thousand thirteen bond, I think, was that if you engage the community like that, you have more trouble getting your bond passed. You engage the community at the outset. If you engage the community at the outset, where everybody gets a chance to find out what the thinking is, what's behind it, before there's a rollout of a big plan, where everybody can look at it and say, whoa, what was that? So, my, what I, I don't, of course, we don't know what's gonna happen in June with the vote. But my, I guess, hope is that if there's more discussion that's going to be needed after that June vote, that you do what happened in 2013, engage the community immediately, and workshops, talk to community leaders, and get input so that something can come together that will actually gain broad community support. Because I think the timing of that community engagement is critical, because most of us want to support you, and we want to support the schools.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening. I am.
I was gonna say.
Hi, Audrey Dewey, 65 Rose Street. I just want to say, I have a college freshman, we moved here right before she started in Hillside, and I only started coming to board meetings last month. And I feel really badly about that, because I'm really learning a lot, and I'm kind of disappointed in our community that more people don't show up. When my college freshman was in fourth grade, she started in the theater program. And she did that all the way up through her senior year. And although I've not been involved in board functions, I have been. I was the co-president of the Theater Booster Club. And when my daughter graduated, I started to devote my time to my three high school athletes. And my three high school athletes are extremely passionate about their sports. Two of them are two-sport athletes, and one of them is a three-sport athlete. And they want turf fields. I'm also the photographer for all of the banners that you see around the district for all of our sports. And when I did the Spring Media Day, I thought it would be the perfect opportunity to run a poll on how many of our athletes actually want turf fields. Because although I haven't been here, I understand many athletes have spoke passionately about this subject. So, I put a little QR code out, a Google form, and I had one question, and it was, I made sure that it wasn't leading anybody in any direction. It was basically, do you want to keep the fields as they are, or would you prefer turf fields? And then I had four responses. The first was turf fields and lights. The second was turf fields, no lights. Keep the grass fields with lights, and keep the grass lights. When I had thirty-five responses, I was very excited. I was like, because we really, we tried to push the kids to do it. And when we had thirty-five kids, I was really excited. I thought, okay, I mean, it's not, you know, a huge number, but ninety-seven percent of the thirty-five kids wanted turf fields and light. And then the number grew to seventy-five responses, but the percentage was the same. And then all of a sudden, coaches shared it in Google Classroom, and the number jumped to 280. Now, is there a chance that some kids voted more than one time? Yes. The percentage, however, did not change. It went down a tiny bit. It went down to ninety percent. But there is about four percent of those kids who didn't want the lights, they just want the turf. So, when we talk about environmentally friendly, and I compost, I have native pollinator plants in my front yard, I am environmentally conscious. But I think two things can be true at the same time. I think we can be concerned about the environment, but weigh the small amount, the small impact that that, that a turf field will make on our local ecosystem. And weigh the ninety-three percent of our high school athletes who want a level playing field with the teams that they play against. And I think their opinion is what really matters in all of this.
Thank you. Thank you. What else? No? Good. Thank you all. Moving on to a report from Dr. McCursie.
So, the report from Dr. McCursie is, "All is good, and we continue to work hard."
I like that report.
Focused on the budget and bond. Cara Tameo, who works very closely with Melissa D. on bringing the every-other-week report, and I had actually shared this with our student liaisons, knowing that we often got a little redundant. Their version was better. The written material is brilliant from Melissa and Cara, the delivery verbally wasn't what it should be. So, what we're gonna be doing for the next several meetings is leaning on our student liaisons for the report from the district, and our energies are gonna be on communications regarding the budget and the bond. And yes, if there's something significant, I will share, but just so you, we reiterated that. Still, is that still a good deal? Is that, Melissa's still a good deal? Okay. All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to an administrative report from Dr. Shizmaniski.
All is well in curriculum, instruction, and assessment land as well. I just wanted to recognize and thank our ELA department and our Chair of the English Department, Sarah Walters. They did some truly exceptional work this morning for their curriculum inquiry. This has been ongoing. And this morning, people were up, they were moving about the rooms. They were taking a look at the narrative writing standards. They were articulating how they are teaching those standards. We were looking for gaps, we were looking for overlaps. Then we moved into process, how we're teaching writing process. That got us into all sorts of things, including culturally responsive teaching practices. And there is a lot of great work happening. So, I just really want to recognize and thank the collaboration of grades five through eight in middle school, doing that wonderful work. There's a similarly collaborative process going on right now, K-12 for art, also K-12 for music. So, we have a lot of things moving about. We have a site visit coming up for our art department. They're looking at amplifying authentic learning and really taking a look at student agency in the art department, and thinking about how, even with their creations, that they can fail forward and determine things that they can do themselves to have authentic pieces that they've been able to really problem solve and think about how to correct for the next iteration. Music is looking at vocabulary and articulating vocabulary across the K-12 system, which is actually much more intriguing than it sounds, because that got us into teaching practices. It got us into the resources that are actually being used. And in all three cases, they're looking at strengthening vertical coherence. And so, shout out to all of our wonderful professionals who are rolling up their sleeves. Thank you to John Carini, Music Department Chairperson, Ezra Elliott, Art Department Chairperson. And we've all been linking arms behind the scenes, and I'm truly proud of the faculty. So, just a brief update there.
That's great. Now, and just to share, you showed me some of the photos from this morning, and it was like a hive of activities, so it was really nice to see. Yeah, that's great. Where's the site visit for the art?
We're looking at Bedford. They have an innovative approach that they're using within their art program, so we want to check it out, and it's very much aligned. So, one of the things I do is, if we are engaged in an inquiry process, and there's a goal that people have, and it can be helpful in terms of collecting data and really understanding from networked improvement communities around us, how people are approaching these things, I put out the ask to our Curriculum Council, the group that I'm a part of. And then, things come back. We get offers. I get to learn more about programs elsewhere. Then I involve the Department Chairperson in terms of what might be very helpful. We took a recent call. We had a similar approach with the art department. We decided it actually wasn't the right match for what we were looking to do. But what was interesting is, with that district, we linked arms, realizing we're in the same place, and let's see if there's another place we can learn from. So, it's really exciting. And then, of course, we get to lead in other areas and sometimes host in our district as well. So, it keeps our region a little bit smaller and our innovation percolating.
That's great. Lovely to hear.
Can I, can I ask a question about what the, the community members just talked about at public comment? The ELA audit, can you talk a little bit about that? What was?
We are gonna, can we just say it's the next thing in business items?
Oh, sorry.
Just for pace sake.
Never mind.
We'll get right to it. But Bill, you had one mention something?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was left out of key. This morning, I think, as the board knows, because I let you know where I am, we had three hours for the first meeting on the whole regionalism topic.
All right.
So, there are about nineteen out of some thirty-plus districts that have, in our Southern Westchester area, agreed to be part of this. So, right there, you're getting an indication it's not everybody. In the room today, there were about ten of the nineteen there. So, it's off to a start. And I think just, we keep being reminded, this is not about forced mergers. It's not about making us all combine in ways that don't make sense, as opposed to how do we begin to think together, work together, really to maximize our resources. I pushed out to the community here something called "Time, Talent, and Treasure." That's kind of what's going on here. How do we connect better? We've got a ways to go, but Dr. Harold Coles, and you'll be voting a little later on sort of our BOSI's ongoing relationship, keeps emphasizing, please bring us good ideas, because they want to really go push the commissioner and advocate with the commissioner on what's needed. So, is, this will now be something I'll be spending a fair amount of time on. In two weeks, we have another several-hour meeting, and I will come back to the board, do some, we'll find the right time, probably this summer, as part of this promised gathering with the board, do some, roll up our sleeves, what would you hope to see with this? I'll send you to do that with the leadership team. So, I just wanted to let you know it's underway. You know, it's, I think everyone in the state has just used the ratio, wanted not only nineteen of thirty-two potential down this way, but there are a number of us digging in.
Were our Rivertown neighbors present?
Artsley, excuse me, Irvington is present very much. Others may be. Terratown, I think, will be as part of the nineteen, so we at least do have a couple of Rivertown. But it's a great question, because you're immediately looking to how do you connect with like districts? Already, there's some very valuable data being shared that is all public record, so at an upcoming meeting, I can share that. And I'll leave you with a good piece of news. While enrollment is dropping across the state, we are holding steady. We are one of the few districts holding steady. So, but there's other data that we can begin to share later.
Thank you. I'm glad you brought that point back up, because I, you know, something you brought up also. I do think, going forward, we're gonna have to find some clever way to lean into that capacity. Absolutely. I mean, it just makes too much sense. That's great to hear. And I'm glad the district had the foresight to opt into that when we had the chance, so it's great. Moving on to business items. Are there any questions from one to the twelve? And you were focusing on number seven, so, sorry I interrupted you. Dave, you have a question?
No, no.
So, do you want to ask it again, because I kind of forgot it?
Can you tell us about it and what the impetus was behind seeking this?
So, we have been, over time, learning about the body of research known as the Science of Reading. We've gone to, I've gone with middle school teachers, with Hillside teachers. Amy Casas joined me at the last one with a couple of the teachers. And we attend workshops that are hosted by our regional BOSI's. And BOSI's is really the main line to New York State Education Department, so they interface. So, sometimes, sometimes they will even partner with State Ed to come in and do some of these workshops. So, there have been briefs that have been released that we've had the opportunity to dig into. There have been workshops that we've been able to attend. And the most recent one that we attended was around, it was an overview of P3 literacy best practices associated with the body of research known as Science of Reading. And they, as part of that work, they were talking about the attestation that we will have to do, and we had the opportunity to dig into that and actually start to complete some of it. And this gets submitted in the State Ed portal. Originally, when our Curriculum Council, which is a separate group, was talking throughout the region around Science of Reading and the upcoming attestation, you know, there were originally, like, this is back a bit ago, to what extent it would ask for detailed areas rather than a general attestation. And so, now that the attestation has been released, we have the opportunity to dig in more and really see the level of detail. So, in starting that process, I had proposed that it would be very helpful to have an additional lens, because we have been working very closely and successfully with Dr. Gravity Goldberg and with Heather, who's her associate, who also draw from that body of research. But Hope Weinberg, who is facilitating the workshops, who is incredibly knowledgeable from the literacy perspective and very connected at the state level with the literacy expectations from the state, we were just very impressed by her. And we were thinking that it might be useful to have an additional set of eyes and really go through the different component areas. And my personal belief, and I know Amy Casas joins me in this, is that there's always room for growth in everything that we're doing. So, to have a different lens with a separate perspective, someone who has not also been directly facilitating work with us, but has also been not only a regional lens for us from a professional learning perspective, but also very connected at the state level to the expectations, we thought it would be helpful. So, we want to continue our literacy journey.
Let me just add, because as Melissa and Maureen note, by pure chance, I think the Friday of the week you went to see Dr. Weinberg, she presented to all of the superintendents for Southern Westchester, showing the importance of this issue. And I'm not gonna pretend to be a literacy expert, but I've been around discussions on this, going back into the first, if you will, literacy wars were.
The First World War?
Just after the peanut wars.
The first literacy war, and the professor to my right will check me on this, but it was, it was in, quick, quick, Bill, nineteen, yes, thank you, nineteen, yes, working for the Joyce Foundation, sitting in meetings in Washington. Anyway, here's that following, that point matters, because Dr. Weinberg's knowledge is exquisite. Her presentation of the substance of this is about the best I have ever heard. She comes with a, you know, a point of view and some layerings and all, because she has a strong personal point of view on things, but her knowledge is exquisite. And explains the science of reading, explains why it matters, explains what it does and doesn't do. The Foundations point brought up, she knows deeply how that relates, assessments and all the rest. So, this is a start. It's some money we have to spend. So, part of the impetus is, the state has mandated we do this. Let me underscore finally what Melissa just said. She knows the ins and outs of what NICE Ed is requiring, mandating, and needs to have, which was one of the reasons that Melissa and colleagues were meeting, was, okay, this audit has gotta happen. How do you manage it? But then, with the superintendents underscoring the importance. So, I think this is a plus for us. I think for the residents who've been raising questions, I think the content here, the substance of the critique, will be quite valuable. I hope that helps. I mean, that's a very strong positive statement on Dr. Weinberg as a, through BOSI's as the expert to look at this.
So, she is, she is absolutely an expert, absolutely a neutral. And I've been pulling people along with me, and they were very impressed with the professional learning that's been provided. And having an additional set of eyes is incredibly helpful.
Yes. I just wanted to chime in to share that our conversations on the board about the Science of Reading and work with my students, who are all school leaders, has become a pressing issue across New York State, across the nation. And I leave tomorrow morning at 4:00 a.m. for a national conference, the American Educational Research Association, which is like the premier research association for the U.S. And I'm actually chairing a meeting on Thursday at 8:00 a.m. on the Science of Reading, where we have Marcus Eidenberg, who's the expert on phonics, and we have Lucy Cockens, who's the expert on balanced literacy. And we have a bunch of other people who are really stars in their field that are really contending with the research on this topic. And I think it's important, because it's become highly politicized and charged. And much of it was set forth by a podcast by a woman named Hanford. And she's been changing some of her tune, and there's just been a lot of new research and development. So, I think it's really important that we stay up to date. The good news is I've asked the organization to record it, and if all the key stakeholders, because it's a little political, say yes, I will bring it to all of you, and I will share everything that I learned, because it's the latest in research. And I think it shows that a lot of the things that we're working towards in our district is right on.
That's great.
Excellent, Catherine.
This board is plugged in. Thank you, Catherine. 4:00 a.m., my goodness.
I have actually my introduction, which talks about the reading world.
I'm glad to hear that you were, that Lucy Cockens is going.
Oh, she, I know. I think she lives in Dobbs Ferry, by the way.
Yeah, she lives in Dobbs Ferry.
Oh, really?
She's our, one of our celebrity speakers, that and Marcus Eidenberg.
Wow.
So, that said, I'd like to give permission to our students to go home.
Yes.
And for someone else to go home, since she's leaving at 4:00 in the morning.
That's true, the votes are over.
Get out of here, all of you.
Safe travels, represent us well, and I can't wait to see what you've got.
Yes.
Don't we want her to vote on the business items?
Tell them to record them, let you record them.
Do you want to vote on the business items, real fast?
Sure, sure, yeah, absolutely.
All right, we'll make it quick. Students can still leave, don't worry. It's a little chaotic at the moment. Are there any other questions for business items, one through twelve?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment, which is, thank you to the PTSA for the $2,000 grant that they're sharing with the district to enable the author of The Wild Robot to do a couple of presentations.
Wow.
A movie, which I have to say, when I watched, made me cry. So, I think it's awesome that we're able to have that author do two presentations with our elementary students. So, go community groups who help us. Every little bit helps.
Was it that you watched and made you cry?
The Wild Robot.
The Wild Robot, and he's the person that...
He's going to cry tonight.
Yeah.
That's a great point. Nice comment. Any other comments, questions on business items one through twelve? Is there a motion to approve business items one through twelve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Away you go. Safe travels.
Travel well.
Get some sleep. Students can still go. One second, let me just answer this real fast. Okay. Moving on to personnel. Oh, I'm sorry. I was, yes, I'm sorry. Moving on to placement services for CSE and CPSE. Are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve our placement and services for CSE and CPSE?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving on to personnel, are there any questions about our appointments, questions or comments about our appointments or our resignation? Is there a motion to approve our appointments and our resignations?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving on to minutes, these would have been from April eighth, I said April seventh.
Resignations, we did that.
We did.
That was part of it.
Any questions or comments regarding board minutes from the April eighth meeting? Is there a motion to approve our minutes from the April eighth meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving on to new business, there's a document here, much like we have our sort of tripartite budget, BOSI says theirs, which is facilities, programming, and their administrative budget, they just let us know, I guess, statutorily every year. And then, so this is new business, are we voting on these trustees? Okay, and there are three trustees, we're not picking between them, we're just, these are our representative, okay, right.
Right, that's what I figured. Some of these names, I seem, these have been there already.
Yeah. Are there any questions at all, comments about the BOSI's budget or the trustees that we're voting for to represent us at BOSI's? Can we do it all at once, or do it separately? No? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the BOSI's budget, and the BOSI's board trustee votes for Lynn Fraser McBride, Joan Weber, and Robert Johnson? So, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving on to second public comment, anybody is motivated, no? Down to agenda reviews, we're going to be into May here, and we're looking at May sixth. And we have the public hearing for the budget, we're going to discuss this presentation of the HEF grants. Anything else that we're going to be, was there something we punted from the last one that we, like, we're going to stick down here?
Punted?
Something else, oh, the cell phone policy. I think that's, yeah. Do we have, are we going to still, are we going to be talking about that at a later date?
Say that again?
The cell phone policy, I know we sort of kicked that around.
Yeah, so, I met this week to sort of talk that through with Andy Kleiman and Scott Winn. You know, they can turn some things around with you pretty quickly, but we're thinking maybe more towards June. We have that discussion, may not try and get it done in May.
We still have to hear from the state, too, right?
Yeah, I think there's increasing sense, and we don't, nothing's definite, that this is now a negotiating piece for the governor, so may pull back in terms of how much the governor will insist on things. There's a sense that local control may win the day on this, and that means a lot of districts, where they'd like to land is where we already are. My sense is there's an appetite for us to be more strict, if you will, in Hastings with this. I think we're strong and fine, K4, you know, middle school, we've had the phones out of sight and away, that's been easy to monitor. I think the smart watches are an issue, though. I think that's been, as I've been understanding more, at least at the middle school. High school, with fresh eyes now in all the classrooms a lot, Andy and Tara do feel the pouches are working well for phones, the issue's the in-between time, and then some time when students may be in the halls, because that's part of our space problem, if they have to go in the halls for some assessment purposes, I think there may be some concern with what's happening with the phones. I also just did nineteen observations as part of my contractual job with that, and in all of those classrooms, yes, they knew the observer was coming, just always an issue with observations, but the phones were in the pouches, and I watched some students unasked get their phones in the pouches. So, that part is working. I think the plan at the middle school was yonder pouches, I'm not sure that's going to work in terms of how we pay for that. So, I'm giving you some background, some up-to-date, but I think the board should have a discussion about how serious you want us as professionals to be on this topic. Do you want us to go further than we have been, which is in the middle school, to get that much tighter on as it relates to, you know, smart watches, any access that there is to phones that are in the lockers, but students find a way to get to their locker and check. And then the question at the high school is the in-between time, the non-classroom time. Do you want us to really go bell to bell, no phones? Final update is, and I, Karen, that's Karen, wow, Brian, Bill, our two student liaisons did not bring that up today, but Mr. Kleiman was doing open-mic opportunity sessions these couple days for students to give their point of view voluntary, and I don't, I have not heard how that went on, or Melissa, if you or anything.
I haven't heard yet, but I know that that was an important thing.
I can anticipate what was said, but, you know, he wanted to say, if the governor is very strict, what's your reactions to that? I did say to him that the superintendent and the board may want us to go further than we have, so if they do, what's your reaction? So, there's a lot there to discuss and talk about, I think it's really important you as a board talk about this. It has to get done in public, there's not an executive session opportunity around this.
Okay.
So, question is when?
All right, so we'll write it in, yeah, so...
Can I ask a question?
Can we talk about it now?
Number one, what, is it a yonder pouch, you said?
Yeah.
What is that? Is that like across the room?
No, it's a pouch that, like, magnetically seals the phone, so signals can't get in or out, so...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And then the phone is where, on the kids?
No.
Is it in like a central location or something?
Yeah, I think they hold them.
Yeah, they would hold them, they would...
Oh, they do, they do hold them.
They hold them, but they have no signal.
They can't open them.
Oh, they can't open them, not you?
Yes, they're locked.
All right.
Sure they can.
There is a cost there.
What's that smile, Dave?
You could easily go on TikTok and find a way to open a yonder pouch, very simply. But they are hard to open, but the kids know how to maneuver to use them. I mean, yonder, whatever you do, I don't want to, I have my own question, but I don't want to...
I guess my other question, and I don't want to put you on the spot, Bill, but like, in the strictest writing of it, if the state were to say, this is what must be done, what's the difference between that and what we do?
Well, what the governor espoused as wanting would be bell to bell, no phones. So, where, so the very specific difference is where our high schoolers are able to have their phones with them, on them, and using between classes, that would be not allowed.
Okay. And are they centrally located in a, like, what's the, is it in this pouch, or is there other?
Collected.
Yeah, collected, and you pick them up on your way out?
Or they'd have to be, if, you know, you might put them in your backpack, but just not able to use them. And if, and then there's an issue of how you monitor that and pay attention to that.
Okay, gotcha.
There's some sense the governor may not go to that extent.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question about the smart watches, so in the high school, do the students, if they have an Apple Watch, they have to put the Apple Watch in the, in the suitcase thing? What do you call it?
Yeah, that's not, those have not been going in, but that's a good point.
But what we've been noticing is that they're tied.
I mean, that is a way around, not having your cell phone.
Right.
Yeah, because you don't even need your cell phone anymore, you could really do everything there.
Well, I mean, I think the sense, I mean, this approach started with Lou a year and a half ago, and hats off to Lou, I mean, he just proceeded and said, we're going to do this, and, you know, there was some pushback, took a little bit, but again, to me, it matters, the fresh eyes of Andy and Tara saying, in the classroom, it's, the phones are not an issue, be it through remote, i.e., it's working.
Yeah.
But it's the in-between time, the passing time, the hallways, the open campus.
And who is the largest voice in governor aside, right, in the school district of the students not having their phones in the in-between time?
Meaning who's advocating that the students shouldn't have their, be traveling between classes and have access to their phones? I think it's coming mostly from parents and families.
Parents and families.
I think there are a good number of staff who are concerned, then the question is, how do you actually monitor this, and is that going to place a burden on staff? You know, there's a transition, and hats off to the faculty, teacher, staff for getting the pouches to work to the extent they have, that's right there in front of them. The hallways are a different issue, and it's a culture moment in Hastings. I mean, there's been, you know, a sense of you move about the hallways, and, you know, yes, you got to behave, and we have a lot of adults around, but the adults are, you know, if it's, do they want to then be saying, okay, put the phone away, or... I think there are mixed feelings from the, you know, and I don't think Nate Morgan mind me repeating this, I mean, his view is what we have here works.
I would like to say that I actually do hope that there is a tightening in the middle school. Phones are being used in classrooms. I get texts like once a week from my daughter in a class, and I will say, what are you doing? You know, I'm like not encouraging this at all, but it is happening, especially happened during advisory. And I think that there are some, some teachers who are a little more lax, and others who are more strict, and I do think it is burdensome for teachers to have to monitor this, but I also don't know who else would do it. But we definitely have to think about that, but I don't think that that can be the determining factor in terms of whether we go bell to bell or not. What really should inform us is, especially in the high school with the phones being allowed, what is happening culturally that is making people not want this to happen? And what is happening is texts, compulsive texting, social media posts, you know, bullying, cyberbullying, and tons of distraction. And that's really a lot of why the governor is pushing for this. I know that there was a forum recently in one of the Rivertowns, and there was a very articulate high school senior who said, I'm eighteen, you know, and I have outside school responsibilities, I have a job, I need my phone, and I absolutely hear that, and I wonder if we could go bell to bell until junior year, and then junior year up a little bit.
Yeah, no, these are all things to talk through, the management, I just, it's creative, the management issue there is tricky.
Yes.
The upside is the superintendent's office is in the building, so I see a lot. So, I just can then play out, I'm going down the hallway, and unless I know someone's a sophomore or junior, and they got the phone out, I'm suddenly in a very awkward moment.
Yep. I understand.
And so, but that's creative thinking of that, we've got developmental differences here. The, so...
Like, middle school, why wouldn't you have bell to bell? Like, what reason would there be for kids to have a phone?
Yeah. I think, you know, personally, I think we should do some sort of a pilot, because the kids themselves might actually enjoy the liberation from not having a phone, and I say that, like, after they get through the hump, let's say, and they will be more present and actually speak to the person next to them rather than being on their phone. And I think it can be very liberating for folks that are, like, addicted to their phones.
I think kids say exactly that, you know, not my own kids, you know, yeah.
But I think the entry point would be where I, you know, where you should kind of lock it up, like you when you go in a courthouse, they take your phone, you know, and when you come out, they give you back your phone, so...
Yeah, so, I mean, we're going to put on the agenda at some point, obviously, it's going to be, you can tell already, it's a big topic, so we'll just make appropriate space for it.
So, let me, because we had a bit of a discussion here, but I think it was fair game, because we're trying to set the agenda, so I don't want you to have a discussion about a non-posted item, because then people might get cranky with you. So, but I'm just, why don't we nail it down? I mean, if we...
Because it is, everything gets busy now, because we're rolling to the end of the year.
Yeah, because, yeah.
Five-six might be something, you know, the next meeting might be where we want to try and have it initially.
Because we need to know by the end of the year? Is that the thing?
Deadline's August, but we still don't know, but we don't know where the state is, so we're kind of like in limbo.
You don't have to know by any specific time.
No, we don't, I mean...
I thought by, before the beginning of the year?
The official deadline, I guess, is in August, from presumably in the budget from the government.
We have to put a policy in place.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
But, sorry.
Yeah, and that's not been signed off on, that was a proposal.
Right.
Right, I mean, in some ways, what makes it easier is if you have a top-down edict, then you don't have to make any decision at all, right? But to the extent that the governor has her ideas about, you know, how this should play out, there's also local politicians who have, you know, they weigh in on what they think is appropriate, and so the question is whether or not they're going to give that latitude to individual districts to set their own policies. So, that's really where it will come into play.
Right, so do we wait?
I mean, I think the expectation is the budget's going to come out for May sixth, that's very late. I mean, like, so I think...
Do you have a sense, Marine, or when the...
Yeah, I mean, that seems to be, it's all six weeks late. Yeah, it's not, it's a requirement, it's been...
So, we can pencil it in, I mean, because it just, every meeting gets so busy past that, so...
I think there's a Dune documentary, does anybody know of it?
Screenagers?
Is that what it is?
That's one of them, Screenagers is one of the big ones.
It's supposed to be really good about kids and cell phones and...
Absolutely.
Just tech in general and...
Right. Probably the only thing here.
It's broader than cell phones, right? I mean, that's the thing, it's like any internet-enabled device, right? So, that encompasses the fact that obviously our older students, at least going into this year, we're still having the permission to use their personal devices, you know, and then trying to have everybody operate under the Chromebook umbrella, and how that's different, because does that run the kind of, like, faster programs that they need when they're doing more sophisticated, like, science research-type programs? So, it's complex, you know, in terms of how we have this conversation.
Yeah. All right, so we are penciling it in a little bit for five-six?
Yeah, so, yeah, so then, let me, I'll be very efficient in the following question. Would you be satisfied with the six being a discussion amongst you with, if it works your schedule, with Andy and Scott, and I might encourage them to have Dan and Tara as part of that, just to be thinking out loud together on...
That'd be great.
That'd be great.
What would work?
And what they're seeing and what they're hearing.
You know, because, for example, we may not have the resources for a yonder solution at the middle schools, so we may be thinking about different things. I'm already hearing enough to say, this is a board that has an appetite to take this to take this further than where we are, right? So I think then if we just commit to an open discussion, I sure, the four of them, if we can get all four here, because I think it'd be a good moment for the assistant principals to, to think out loud.
Definitely.
Not to commit to anything, but then they get a flavor, you get a flavor.
Definitely think it's a place where Tara and Dan should be.
Yeah, I agree.
And also just to operation, to understand what is in place right now and is actually being enforced or.
Because my, my final, final comment is my hunch is from under that, and I should have been sharper, but Maureen knew this, Scott knew this, that the governor likely negotiate this away from as strict as she was going.
Yeah.
And then that's going to say to us, we're ready to take this to another level, which then means that discussion could be very helpful. Right? You see them?
Yes.
Yeah, it's going, it's going to land in our laps, probably.
All right. So let me, well, if their schedule allows, we'll get that set up.
Okay.
Perfect.
I think community members would be interested in hearing that conversation.
Oh, absolutely.
So we'll post, make sure it's in the.
I think so.
Thank you. I'm going to open up for a report of ed comments.
I just had one, I guess it's a question, and you could get back to me, but it was, I think more for you, Melissa. We brought up something about kind of like taking non-public schools that are in the district under, like, under your wing, so to speak, and kind of vouching for them. And there was a whole process. And I just wanted to remember the timeline on that, and are we on track and kind of how that's going?
We are. The one that we have to attest to is Hudson Lab. And we've had BOCs partnering with them to be able to do that process while they're similarly running their accreditation. They won't meet their accreditation in time, but they will meet the BOCs in time, and then we'll get it on the agenda, and then you have to vote on that. But we're taking the perspective of the person who's actually reviewing their program.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Yes.
Any other board comments?
I just have a general comment more, and it's actually with respect to public comment because we do kind of have this feast or famine thing where like there's a hot topic and we get a massive turnout or it's crickets. And sometimes I speak to members of the, of the community and they say, well, you know, when we do come to comment, one of the things that we don't like is that you don't engage with us. And so I just wanted to say from members of the community, whether you come in person, if you write to us, if you show up in person, we do hear your comments. We do read your comments. And it's just the nature of the public comment and the way that it's set up, that there isn't an intent to dialogue. But rather, we get that feedback, we have to process. And oftentimes, there are many times even questions that are posed to us that as an entity made up of seven individuals, we can't answer. But we have our administrative staff here who could say, oh, we're hearing this. Because collectively, we can make decisions based upon the feedback that we hear from community members and various stakeholders. But oftentimes, we're also presented with new information. So there isn't, there isn't like a real-time opportunity for us to say, ah, yes, you know, you presented this to us, here's your answer. That's not the nature of public comment, but that shouldn't be received as, we're not paying attention to you or just kind of these like robots, you know, who are like having this information like generated and shared with us and that we don't process. I think like, you know, even as we've talked about the evolution of the budget process, the evolution of the bond process, everything that we receive, as I've said, whether it's in-person feedback, if it's written feedback, whether it's, you know, people that we talk to on the sidelines that we encounter, just members of this community, we do listen. We do take what people have to say very seriously. And I just wanted to acknowledge that, that sometimes I can understand how people might have this, you know, misunderstanding that we're not listening, but in fact, we are. And we take what we hear from people very seriously. And that's maybe sometimes why we, you know, move in ways that people think is too turtle-like and other people think is just too fast, but here we are.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Well said, Sylvia. Thank you.
Yeah, well said. I like, I like hearing from people. Anyone else? Any board comments? No. Just a quick thanks for the immense amount of work that these votes today represent. I mean, it can't be said enough, but thank you. Thank you all. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'm going to say one more thing. I'm, two things. I know I acknowledged Bill and Maureen before, but also Melissa and Melissa, apologize for not including you in all of the constant work and meetings and thinking and changing that's gone into all of this. And also that I think we should let the students know that we're going to do.
Oh, cell phone?
The cell phone discussion that day.
That's a good point.
There might be some high school students who want to come talk at public comment, too.
I'm sure there will be.
And that's, that's important for us to hear.
They're a stakeholder, right?
There might even be middle schoolers who want to come.
Maybe some live in your house.
Well, well, actually, my, my fourth grader, Bill, did come home last week, I think, or no, two weeks ago, and said, can you tell Dr. McCursie to talk to all the superintendents in New York State so that not all the fourth graders start the New York State test at the same time because all of our computers crashed?
Oh, wow.
Oh.
Talk to Dr. Simansky, doctor.
I was on the phone with the state about it as it was occurring, watching the whole region, watching the thread tick. And we were all helping each other and figuring it out. But, you know, it actually didn't have anything to do with the district. It was a shared problem, and it was the vendor, and the state was not happy.
I bet.
And you could tell from the tone of the email. So will it attack, will it affect the scoring? Will it affect testing fidelity? They will have to figure that out. But there were big problems throughout the entire region. We were one of the victims of the problems, and we persevered. We were able to do it. Some districts couldn't get in even after restarting computers. They had to postpone the test. The state expanded the window. So, you know, I know we're at the end of our meeting, but it was not, it was not very easy for the region. We were all scrambling, but we were able to test. So we'll see. We'll see. We'll see what they do with the scores. We'll see.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.